Board of County Commission meeting for Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, to order. Mr. Reverend Terry Wright with Grace Fellowship will be leading our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Commissioner Pickens. Would everyone rise, please?
Pray with me if you will. Well, Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to live in Putnam County. What a beautiful place you made. Lord, thank you for letting us be here. Lord, thank you for being with us through the storm. Father, thank you for all the men and women who work so hard. Lord, it's a privilege and an honor to live in a county with such excellent people who do excellent work. Thank you, Lord, for them. Now, Father, we do pray for this county commission. Should bless them, be with them. Lord, give them wisdom beyond their experience in themselves. Lord, give them courage to chart new courses that produce great results for our citizens. Father, again, be with everybody who leads and everybody who serves in our county. Bless them, Father. We love them. We believe in them. Keep them safe and prosper them, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Wright. Appreciate it. And Commissioner Pickens. I do want to, before we go to the approval of the minutes, I would like to recognize Mr. Sparkman in the audience. His birthday is today, eighty-six years old. Happy birthday. Thank you for being here. Gentlemen, we do have the item two on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the August eleventh, August fifteenth, August fifteenth, and August twenty-second and August twenty-eighth meetings. The Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. Another point of privilege, if you don't mind, I'm going to be calling Mr. Fred Doolin with FEMA up for just a few minutes. Mr. Doolin, are you here? There you are.
While he's walking up, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question, if I may, on the minutes. I noticed that the meeting we had two weeks ago wasn't on there. Is it taking a little lag time in between?
They're com- I'm sure they're compiling those, the special meeting. Yeah.
It does. Tony goes ahead and gets the minutes prepared and provides a draft and then, and then I and soon Terry will go and go through that.
Certainly not a problem. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's a little bit of lag type. She's had a lot of meetings to prepare minutes for, so.
I wasn't going there at all.
Commissioner Turner, you're going to have to pull that microphone closer so we can get you recorded.
Okay, how's that?
That's fine. Mr. Doolin, you have the floor, sir. This is just, and I do want to mention that before he comes up, there has been the video playing for the public service announcement on trash pickup for our residents out there that are watching. The guidelines are, have been playing and they are on our website about what trash is picked up. Mr. Doolin, for FEMA, you have the floor, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before the board today. My name is Fred Doolin. I'm with FEMA. My role in FEMA is in our governmental affairs, so I would support you as your liaison. Any questions you might have as board members, commissioners, elected officials in the counties, happy to work with you on those issues and get you the answers you need. Just very, very briefly, I won't take up much of your time. Today, we've had over six hundred and eighty thousand residents file for assistance and that is the most important thing right now at this point in the disaster recovery process. There's a couple of different ways that individuals can register for assistance. One is the eight-hundred number, eight-hundred-six-two-one FEMA. There's also a disasterassistance.gov website where individuals can register online. And because it's the twenty-first century, you can also download a FEMA app and down and register on that app. Very useful app, weather applications, identify shelters nearby. So not just for this disaster, but moving forward. It's a, it's a great resource and a tool. I've reached out to the elected officials in, in the county. Just met with Mayor Sanders last night. So I'll go around, take their concerns and, and do what we can to support the county and the towns and the cities. And I would greatly like to thank you for your hospitality and to the hospitality of the emergency management here in the county and that EOC facility is wonderful. Happy to answer any questions right now and I will be standing around for after through the meeting. So individually, if you have any questions, you have my contact information, please reach out if there's anything I can do.
Mr. Doolin, you are looking at opening an office, correct? If you'll expound on that just a few minutes.
Yep. So there's what we call Disaster Recovery Center. And the Disaster Recovery Centers is where FEMA sits, the Small Business Administration sits. It's a one-stop shop for individuals to come and get their answers and see what's up with their case. The only DRC, as we call them, DRCs, Disaster Recovery Center that's open in the state right now is in St. Augustine. So while that's relatively close compared to the rest of the state, they are looking to open more DRCs across the state. We just had a disaster survivor assistance team go through the city here yesterday. They go door-to-door knocking on residents' doors to make sure they're registered, to ask them if they'd want to register. When FEMA teams come to the doors, they are identified by badges, shirts, hats, they're very clearly marked. So you'll see them out and about in the community. The team works across multiple counties, so as soon as we can find out when they're in the county, we'll let you know. We'll let the city managers, mayors know. We'll work directly with the Office of Emergency Management. They actually came in yesterday, pulled out the maps and said exactly where they needed to go to address some of the concerns of Mayor Hill. And we'll do that moving forward. I will tell you that we're trying to get more surge teams down here, more disaster survivor assistance teams out and about in the community, not just here in the county, but across Florida. So we're relying for resources there, but I'll keep screaming up the chain to get you what you need.
So the best way for our citizens to contact FEMA is the three ways you mentioned, the phone, email, and download the application.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and if I'll be brutally honest with you, that eight-hundred number is probably the best because you actually have a human being on the other end of that line versus that computer screen.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Staff?
You did say that you met with Mayor Sands.
Yes, sir.
Like, so you're going to meet with all the mayors of the county?
Yes, sir. Last, last night I met with him. I'll be going to Pinoma Park tomorrow. I met Mayor Hill for the first time at the EOC this weekend. I'm going to touch base with him hopefully again today. So I'll be making contact with, with each of the, each of the mayors.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Good. Mr. Doolin, did you mention where this recovery center would be located here in Putnam County?
The, the hope is when they can establish it, it would be in the exact same location as it was during Hurricane Matthew. That's a location that citizens are familiar with.
Fairgrounds?
Much easier. Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Our next item is on proclamation recognizing September seventeenth to twenty-third, two thousand seventeen as Constitutional Week in Putnam County. I've asked Commissioner Turner to read the proclamation. Who's here to accept that proclamation? Okay. I will meet you at the podium. Commissioner Turner?
The only way to you get there or go to reading? Okay. Putnam County. Can you hear me now? Putnam County Proclamation Number twenty-seventeen dash sixty-six, declaring September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty-seventeen as Constitution Week in Putnam County, Florida. Whereas September seventeenth marks the two-hundred-thirteenth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate, commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, now therefore let it be, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty-seventeen is hereby declared Constitution Week in Putnam County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners urges all citizens reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that rights may never be regained duly proclaimed this nineteenth day of September, twenty-seventeen.
Want to move that?
I shall move the weeks up.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
And I just want to say, on behalf of the daughters of the American Revolution, we accept this proclamation. Thank you.
All right. Wait. Turn that around. There you go.
Okay.
All right. morning, Karen Chadwick. Karen Chadwick, if you'll make your way to the microphone.
Good morning. One seventy-nine West Strickland Road. I just brought some invitations to you all. I wanted to let you know that there's a project that's been going on since two thousand twelve and it's about the Aklewaha and the springs on Aklewaha. And there's an artist, Margaret Tolbert. She's an international artist. She works with the World Springs Project. And what they do is they go around different countries around the world and they identify springs, they, they help get the scientists there to do research, they put together cultural programs. And so during the last two drawdowns, she went out there and some other artists did, myself included, and we were able to put together a, a show, two shows, actually, there's several shows. But the first one was supposed to be last Thursday, but because of the storm, it was scheduled, rescheduled to this Thursday. And it's at the La Ferrano Gallery in Jacksonville. And then the next show, with, there's a film that's being put together about the lost springs. And that's going to be shown on the twenty-fourth and Margaret's going to have a show with, with her, she does huge, big paintings and she sells all over the world, so she's pretty amazing. So I just want to make sure everybody knew about it and I have invitations for all of you. The Aklewaha's getting a lot of attention through this and, so I just want to make sure you know about it. And also, I'm sure many of you know that the Aklewaha has a big problem with the water lettuce growing all over the place and the canal was completely blocked and about five hundred acres was sprayed with dichot, including Kenwood. Kenwood was blocked for weeks. It was really nasty, very disgusting, like almost zero oxygen. We had it tested. So with the, with the storm, a massive amount of water were flushed out and the lettuce has gone down to the, up against the dam now. When the wind changes, it could block the canal again. Kenwood and Orange Springs are blocked again. So the access points, the way the system is managed now, they're not reliable. And if you're, if you're going to have tourism, how can you plan things to, to places that are not reliably accessible? I know some, at least one tournament was relocated to the, the public ramp because Kenwood was blocked. So anyway, I wanted to give you these invitations, take a look. There's going to be a lot more shows around in different areas. I know Putnam County has a lot of problems financially, always trying to come up with more money. Maybe it's time to think of other options. Maybe it's time to restore the river, make those access points reliable, let these springs come back to life. It's not going to stop the fishing. When you, when during the drawdowns, people go out there, there's way more people out there fishing, bank fishing and taking their boats out at Kenwood and Orange Springs during the drawdown periods. It's like tournament numbers all through the week. And I, I think it would be a benefit to the county, so my time's up. I want to give you these invitations.
Thank you, Ms. Chadwick. We appreciate that. Ms. Chadwick, not to start a dialogue here, but we realize that there's a massive amount of water going out to the reservoir and that's going to be taking a lot of nitrogen with it and that's going to cause the reservoir to do exactly what it was meant to do. So we look forward to the health of our water quality in Putnam County. Our next speaker, Mr. Earl Dory, please, if you'll make your way to the podium, please, sir. Good morning, Mr. Dory.
My name is Earl Dorn. I'm a resident of East Palatka. About a year ago at this time, actually on September twenty-eighth, I went into Flagler Hospital for quadruple bypass surgery. And about four days later, I was discharged and my son and I went down to the villages for rehab. And about two days later, Matthew hit and rehab was discontinued, so we decided to come home and see what the damage was. And pleasantly surprised, there was no structural damage, a lot of debris and leaves and twigs and storm debris. So we, on the TV, they said pile it up neatly, keep it off the road, we'll be around to pick it up. And so my son and I did that and all the other neighbors did the same thing. And FEMA came around with their assessing vehicles and they said, yep, you're looking good, we'll, we'll pick it up, no problem. And about six weeks later, still no results. And then it got to be two months and we, FEMA came back around to find out exactly how things were going and he was, the man from FEMA was a little surprised that they hadn't picked it up yet. And I said, well, he says, they will pick it up. He says, we gave extra money to the county to contract to have this picked up. And he gave me, I've still got the card and his phone number, personal cell phone. And we waited and then on the TV, they came out and said that Monday was the last day for storm debris pickup. And I called my district commissioner at the time, who I was very, I had a good, good rapport with, was Tommy Stillwell. And Tommy said, well, I'll, I'll check up on it and see. And he got back to me and he said, they're not going to pick it up. And I said, what's the problem? And he said, well, the contractor that the county contracted with won't come on private roads. And I said, wait a minute. I says, the post office, UPS, FedEx, DHL, Waste Pro, Xfinity, they all come on our road and, and provide their services. What's this contractor? And I says, also, I says, the largest part of my tax bill pays for debris pickup from Waste Pro every other week. I says, why don't they pick it up? And he says, no, they won't pick it up because the county's already contracted with another individual, I guess a little pissing contest or whatever. So now we're in the same boat. There's piles of piles of just, there's no, we have no dock debris, no construction debris. It's just leaves, twigs, pine cones and everything else, palm fronds. Are we going to get our pickup?
Mr. Dory, what you've been talking about is really not correct. And let me explain, and Mr. Gass is here and also Waste Pro's here. We, the county, contract to go out and pick that debris up and FEMA gives us a reimbursement. They don't give us extra money and it's based on how fast we can pick it up. The problem is, is private roads, if we go on private roads, it voids the whole system. So we have to take the, the trash. And you'll see our public service announcement that we've done online, it was playing here a few minutes earlier today, that says, take that debris to a public road. But I'm going to turn it over. Mr. Gass, would you come up so we can go ahead and clear the air right now? It's not about Waste Pro. We have a private, we have a private contractor that does, that's contracted by the Board of County Commissioners to do the work that needs to be done. Mr. Gass, please. Mr. Dory, would you let him have the microphone, please?
Hello. Thing is, is that FEMA does not reimburse the pickup of debris on private property. It has to be on a public right-of-way, which is a county-maintained or state-maintained roadway system. Private roadways, there is a system that can be granted, but you got to get insurance waivers from every single individual that owns the property. You've got to get liability waivers. You've got to get a lot of burden that's there, particularly if you have part-time residents, you'll never, you know, if you've got somebody who lives out of state the majority of the time, most of the time you can't get that clearance. The best thing to do is take it to the closest public right-of-way, place it there. Then the contractors will come through, pick it up, and remove that debris.
Is the, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
Is the road right outside of Buena Vista, is that the county road, the one going back that goes by, that you turn right to go into their place? Mr. Dory, do you know, is that a public?
I don't know.
I wonder if maybe we could find out. At least they wouldn't have to haul it very far if we can't pick it up in there. Maybe they could just bring it out to the closest public right-of-way and put it down there.
Wait, we, we, hang on, hang on. We got to get this on mic. I see Mr. Cuneo is writing this down now with Public Works. He will get with you. Mr. Dory, if you could get with the gentleman over there in the green shirt, press if you'll raise your hand, or James Cuneo right there, we can get this problem solved for you. But the best thing to do is to take it to the public right-of-way and to separate the piles. That's the best thing that anybody can do, not even taking it to the landfill. Let the contractor do the work that they're hired to do. And that's what we hired them to do. So, thank you very much, sir, and we appreciate your comment.
Chairman Harvey, I do have, to be clarified for me, if, if it meets a criteria of the every, the every other week trash debris pickup, you could put it on the private road and it'll get picked up, won't it? If it meets a certain size and length, so that will get picked up. But if it's the larger stuff is what you've got to get to the right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank the Sheriff.
Hold that a little better to you there.
Yeah, like that?
Can't hear you. Bring it closer.
Like that?
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department for keeping the west end in control when they ran out of gas. It was very helpful. The thing I'm up here about today is the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments. Saturday, we had to come in town and I know a lot of people that go where we went and they jumped me and they said, we're not voting for any county commissioners sitting on that board. They voted for that. I said, no, sir, they did not. He said, who did? I said, the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustments. I said, don't blame the county commissioners, they didn't know. Well, why didn't they know? I said, because we're not allowed to talk to them under the sunshine law. I said, you'll have to call them and ask them. So in other words, somebody on this board needs to change that ordinance because something that important needs to come before the board of all of you. That should have never been in our thing because first off, we go out and we look at the property, but what happened was a lot of people did not do their research on this. And then I found out Friday that they want to put up two great big billboards on Highway seventeen. So if that comes before the board, you need to look at it because something has changed that should have never, ever came before a board. So I found out in the meantime, I can't talk to any one of you about it, but I can talk to the Sheriff's Department about it, that I'm allowed to do. So that's in your bucket, what you want to do, but something has to change that should stop. The people are writing letters to the editor wherever I go, I've had phone calls, because the newspaper printed it word for word, exactly what happened at that meeting. And so, yes, some of us have gotten phone calls. I can't explain it. I was never told why. Maybe one of you can answer that.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify for the record, please?
Mr. Manning?
Matters that come before the Zoning Board of Adjustment are both statutorily and constitutionally, Florida constitutionally required to go before that board. And that board appeals from it do go to the circuit court. They do not, those decisions do not come before the Board of County Commissioners. As far as discussions between members of the Zoning Board of Adjustment and the Board of County Commissioners, since the Zoning Board of Adjustment is not an advisory board to this board, there would be no sunshine violation in discussions between members of that board and members of this board, so long as it's not multiple members of this board having a, a meeting with members of the ZBOA.
Thank you for clarifying that. Linda Myers? The Honorable Linda Myers, I'm sorry. That's a long walk from there. It feels so quiet.
It can be. And when you're late, you're in the back of the room. You know what I'm saying? And that's, I was late. My apologies first to our new commissioner. I know you were, this was just a opportunity for you to be publicly sworn in. I intended to be here. Like many people behind me, as we all walked in at five till nine, it was not at nine o'clock. So again, my apologies and welcome officially to this county commission board and as one of my commissioners. I actually just wanted to give a shout out and was here today also for the recognition of the two-hundredth anniversary of the, the federal, our United States Constitution. As an officer of the Florida Constitution, and I point to also the clerk of courts and I think the sheriff is still here as well, we have the honor to have our offices, the authority come from the Florida Constitution. And as an officer, as many of you, we swore allegiance to the Florida and to the United States. I just wanted to remind myself and thank the daughters of the American Revolution for helping us to celebrate magnificent document that will, will, has been here for two-hundred years and will continue to be here, and that's the good news. And also to thank Terry for stepping up to this. It's, it's a big responsibility. And while I'm here, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I had the pleasure of attending some EOC, Emergency Operations Center meetings for elected officials. So I had an opportunity to be in there and watch, along with many of you, and observe the tremendous staff that we have. And I'm sure you're going to say something about that. I'm going to be leaving, but I did want to say what an amazing team we have in Putnam County and kudos to all of them, not just them, but everybody on the streets and my power company, well, it's FPNL, but it was Kansas City Power and Light was on our road. So thanks to everybody. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. We appreciate it. And there will be a more formal recognition of our, our people down the road, but right now they are still working the EOC.
Perhaps after Maria.
Yeah. Chief Romey, would you like to come up since that segue happened and just kind of give us a quick update before we go to our next speaker? And Director Simpson, please come up also. These two gentlemen, for those of you who are watching or in the audience, I don't know how much sleep you've had in the last two weeks, but it hasn't been very much. And they have had their finger on the pulse of Putnam County. And I will tell you, watching them and staying out of their way, they had the public safety and welfare of the citizens of Putnam County in hand. And along with many, many, the Sheriff's Department, I mean, just, you leave people out, so we won't, but I'm just telling you, these two gentlemen right here spearheaded all the operations that have been taking place as fast as they humanly possibly can do that. And this, yeah, yeah. And I want to say this, the first filter that they go through is the citizens of Putnam County. How can we help them? Don't ever misspeak that their first filter, how do we help the citizens of Putnam County? Gentlemen, you have the floor, sir.
Well, thank you very much. And first and foremost, I also want to just echo the, the thank you to all the emergency support functions and staff and administration, all the municipalities, because together, all of us are the emergency management team and contribute to the, the program of emergency management. And so only through everybody working together at the EOC are we successful. And I do believe that our response to Hurricane Irma was successful. We, we did respond by, by providing sheltering. We disclosed the last of the seven shelters last night. We've provided thousands of MREs, thousands of bottles of water. We've done mobile feeding in all areas throughout the county. Hurricane Irma definitely impacted our county. I'm certain that no one can argue with that. We had destroyed homes. We had over a hundred homes that were major, sustained major damage. And, and we are, we are very glad that, that FEMA is on the ground, providing assistance to residents, registering them for individual assistance. We've been doing this for fourteen days now and recovery is just beginning. Response essentially is over and so now it's, now it's recovery mode and so our office is focused on ensuring that residents get the assistance that they need.
Yeah, thank you.
But yes, by all means, we are, while we are in recovery mode, we- But, yes, by all means, we are, while we are in recovery mode, we are also in preparedness mode, because, you know, that, if you have weakened plans, you may want to reconsider those, because of course Maria is headed our way this weekend and into next week. So, don't let your guard down, continue to be prepared and, but above all else, we want to just say thank you to all the emergency support functions and the help that we've gotten the last fourteen days.
Thank you.
And to that note, everybody who is in the EOC stand up.
Everybody. Everybody.
Ryan and I get the pleasure of, of living there on a day-to-day basis. These folks make, make, fill the seats and make it a home. We have a team from the, as I've heard over time, from the White House to the courthouse. Each municipality, each of these folk, everybody's there, working around the clock, trying to, you know, do anything and everything we can to protect our citizens. And that was the main focus, that's always our focus, and as Ryan said, we've given out over thirty-one thousand bottles of water, over fifteen thousand MREs, and over six thousand hot meals over the last several days, so. I mean, I'm happy to report that we're down to point three percent without power here in Putnam County. Drayton Island has power. So, we're, the power companies have worked very hard. I know New Mexico, Kansas, I mean, they've been from all over the country. Miami crews are, are here from FPNL and Clay and everybody, so, you know, it did, this was not just a small storm like Matthew. Matthew just affected a small portion of the state. This storm affected from the Keys all the way through to Georgia. So, every, in the context of that, this is the worst-case scenario for all the emergency management planners is, you know, that we've, over the dozens and dozens of years, is having a Cat Five coming in one end of the state and go all the way through the other. So, I think we're well on the way to recovery. Putnam is strong, we're always strong. We're better today than we were yesterday, we'll be better tomorrow than we were today, so.
You know, I heard that theme throughout every day that I was there, that let's make today better than it was yesterday for our citizens, and that was the hard work. Commissioner Lavelle, I know that you're probably not, would you like to talk about your experience in the high water and?
I got a new phone, but also.
He also has been known to drive a Humvee, but we're not going to go there.
Mr. Chair, if I may, having Mr. Manning and Commissioner Lavelle and all of y'all there, you know, the, the entire time, just leaning on y'all to say, "Hey, what about this?" Or, you know, "What are you seeing, what can we fix, you know, what are we missing?" But the night of the storm, I have to tell the story.
You have to tell the story, yeah.
One of our larger nursing homes came in to the EOC and said they had pumps running, and the pumps were starting to sputter a little bit, and the water's still rising. We mobilized, Commissioner Lavelle was there, Mr. Manning and many of y'all were, you know, certainly doing a number of things, but we get to the, the nursing home, there's a hundred and seventy-six patients in there, and it's starting to flood. The wind's blowing hurricane-force winds, and the rain is coming down harder than I've ever seen, so I'll turn it over to you from there.
Well, it was almost a scene like Gone with the Wind. When we got there, the, the seriousness of the approaching water, there were patients that had to be moved from one side of the nursing home to the other side, basically to gain four inches of real estate. And we had Public Works there studying the blueprints of the building, and Mike, are you here? There's the hero right there. Mike, he got the blue, he ruined the blueprints, got them wet as they could be, but he figured out how to, where, where we needed to go with those people. And then volunteers, I don't know where they come from, but there must have been seventy-five people that moved well over a hundred and thirty, forty patients in their gurneys with all their attachments to that other side of the building in the hallways. And it was, it was incredible. And then the water was right at the thresholds of all the doors, Placa Police Department, Putnam County EOC, and volunteers from every walk of this county that could get there, got there and started pumping. And they pumped with the fire trucks and then the U.S. Forest Service. We were keeping it at the thresholds of the door. And mind, all this going on, they've got nurses that are on duty, holding up sheets and doing the things you do at a nursing home, tending to patients, changing patients. I mean, it was really unreal, I couldn't believe what I was seeing. So, in the middle of all this, the, it looked like we were going to lose the battle, it really did. I thought we were never going to make it, we had hours to go, and St. John's Avenue looked like a river. It was coming, it would knock you down when you walked out there, it was coming so fast. I'm playing, where could this water be coming from? But it was unreal, and then the U.S. Forestry guy unloaded a big dozer DC-9 thing with a plow, the biggest plow I've ever seen in my life, and he cut a trench from the back of that nursing home to the airport, right behind our treatment facility for mental health and this sort of thing, in pitch-black darkness. I would be so scared to hit a line, and Chief Grimes from the Placa Fire Department was out there directing, I don't know what he was directing, but he was directing, and they got it done, and it really relieved, the river took off, another river. And that kept that end of the building, which was unoccupied at that point for the most part, from flooding and getting serious damage. But it's a night I'll never remember, I mean, I'll never forget, but Crestwood Nursing Home calls in the middle of it and asks Quinn, they're having generator problems, and Quinn has sent in the middle of the night Humvees all over the county to pick up mechanics from the school board, from the National Guard, I mean, these guys were coming and working on this stuff, and the pouring rain, wet, you know, full electricity, I'm like, somebody's going to die here. But nobody died, and those people, our, our EOC staff got those mechanics to the machinery, got them up and going, or kept them going, I should say, and this is where everybody's making the joke about me, but Quinn, I know a little bit about mechanics and stuff, so he sends me to Crestwood Nursing Home, right in the middle of this thing, with a nurse, what I really learned in this thing was the critical need for oxygen-dependent people, very serious deal. So, I go over there to look at, well, first of all, I said, "Well, how do I get there?" He said, "Pick one of those." And he was, he was really busy now, he really was, so I picked the meanest-looking Hummer I could find out there, had water up to the doors, and I got in it with a nurse and took her over to Crestwood. And I'm, I'm laughing, but I'm going to tell you, that was the scariest I've ever been in my life, doing anything. And it was, there were power lines down everywhere, very high water, and I don't know how that machine would go through all that stuff, but it did. And we got there, checked out the, got the nursing home squared away, got their oxygen to the patients over there, and nobody died there, because that's what we were looking at. I was listening to conversations of people saying, "We're probably going to lose three or four people by nine o'clock, by nine AM," and this sort of, I'm like, "You've got to be kidding." I mean, I couldn't believe it, but it all worked out, and then when I got back, there were about four firemen that were just brutally mad at me for taking their Hummer and all their rain gear that was in the back.
The funny part of that is they came up to me after you got back and said, "Chief, we found the Hummer, we weren't going to tell you that we lost it," but they didn't know that it was going on.
They've been making, I've been called the Hummer thief ever since.
At least you didn't grab a road grader, that's the.
No, but what, I mean, you said it.
And also, at the same time, the special needs shelter at Kelly Smith, the power lines fall on the generator there, so they have no power, our entire radio system goes down at the same time, and I'm thinking, what else, you know, what else can go wrong? But everybody pulled together, the EOC had folks there that were planning each contingency, trying to figure out, okay, if this happened, what can we do there? Which I knew I had the great folks there to back us up and to give us those ideas. And Mike, I've never seen him as wet as he was that night, but he pulled out the plans of the nursing home, I don't know where he got them from, but, and he's talking, number Disco's here, and this is fifty-three and all that, and I'm like, it's a number on a paper to me, but he.
You undervalue an engineer when it comes to reading blueprints, you've got to have one. And thank you, Mike, you really did, you're, you're the unsung hero. You kept those people dry, and you probably kept the expense of rebuilding that nursing home to a minimum through your efforts, and we do appreciate it. It was great working with you.
And Lonnie and Jason Pochet with the Florida Forest Service, they never, never said no or what, or are you kidding me? It was like, where do you name me, and we're on the way. So, I have to, like you said.
Thank you. A night never to forget.
Well, what I noticed.
We have many miracles, but that night was a big.
It was, there was divine intervention, I'm totally convinced of that.
And what I noticed is how much you plan and prepare for, and how cool you are under pressure, both, all y'all. I mean, it was incredible to see, let's make, let's figure this out, let's not panic here. And you did a great job. Commissioners, any other comments that you'd like? Mr. Manning? You were wet too, weren't you?
Little bit. I have no words, other than.
Mike is a man of many words, I heard several of them that night.
Thank you.
We were very fortunate, and, you know, God was on our side that night, truly was.
One more thing I want to add, the CEO of the, the nursing home asked me in the middle of this chaos, like, "Who are these people?" I said, "That's the county engineer, that's the county attorney, there's the city manager," and I just started, she goes, "You've got to be kidding." I said, "No, I'm not kidding." We were really out in force, you know? It was, she couldn't believe it, but.
Thank you, we appreciate it. And we'll, we'll do this in the future better, okay? Linda Kreider, you're next on the agenda, I'm sorry. Just felt like the right time to put that in there, so.
It's a hard act to follow.
Yes, ma'am, I know. You're, you're passing out invitations also?
Thank you.
Good?
Well, that really is a pretty amazing story. This is Linda Kreider, 116 Kirkland Street, Placa, Florida. And my appreciation to everyone that did so much, I was very, very fortunate to be unscathed, you know, maybe a lot of stuff to clean up, but no trees down on my new Bartram Inn, which is what I'm inviting you all today with those invitations, to the grand opening of the Bartram Inn, it's at 116 Kirkland Street. It's our second bed and breakfast for the area, the Grand Gables is already open, running, unfortunately struck by lightning, but they're recovering. And together, I think we're going to hopefully invite lots of people to, to our county and our city, and to enjoy the mighty St. John's, which is the other invitation, this, the grand opening is Thursday night afternoon from four to six, and it's going to be the opening ceremony basically for the Bartram Frolic Weekend, which is going to take place along the riverfront with many, many things happening that are, lots of things for children, and there's reenactors going to be there, Seminole Indians, and William Bartram in his gala will be there, and there's music, yay, good music on the amphitheater. And that photograph, I don't know, is there a way to show that up to the?
I don't think there is.
Audience, well, anyway, what they're looking at is a photograph I took when we had the Bartram Conference here a couple of years ago. On Sunday morning, we had a Bartram meditation walk along the river, and that was the reenactment boat that was to, to be Bartram's craft going along the river at sunrise, so that's what that is. And so, we, I just want to invite you all to come out, even if you can just come for a few minutes and say hello. There'll be music picking on the porch and some refreshments, and it's open to the public. This is September twenty-eighth, Thursday, in the afternoon from four to six, at 116 Kirkland Street, Placa, Florida. And hopefully, it'll be the beginning of a great adventure for myself. We're going to connect with not only the Bartram Committee, but the Blue Ways and Trails, and offer biking tours and kayaking tours, and Bike Florida's going to come again with their small group tours, and so hopefully, we'll have a lot to offer for people. So, thank you for your interest and support, and hope to see you at the Bartram Frolic.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. All right, that's the end of our blue cards. Is there anybody in the audience that did not get a chance to fill out a blue card that would like to have an opportunity to speak? If so, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
John Spells, 106 Fitcher Lane.
Good morning, Mr. Spells.
Good morning. I'm here, I'm kind of disappointed in all the commissioners, I'm not here to bash, but I'm just going to go straight to the point, and one of the things is, is that Dog Branch Canal, I'd like to congratulate all you all that did receive money to try to make a change, and due to the fact that you didn't, the lady did lose her home this time. And what really bothers me is for a ditch that is narrow enough to stand on one side and jump to the other side, you give it the title of a canal when it, at one point, ain't nothing but a ditch, it's not a canal until it get to 207A. You hadn't even cut a bush or anything, but if you would have even put a little effort in to at least go as far as the trail, it would have kind of made a big difference on the amount of water that accumulated, but due to the fact that nothing wasn't done, she did lose her place this time. And you know, it's just the effort of going through all of this here for over four years, and everybody's saying, "We don't have the money," and then you say, "Well, we got a little money," then somebody come up with an idea, "We're going to do a nutrient study." But to me, whether you did a nutrient study on it or not, something had to be done, but yet, nothing was done, and she did lose her home this time.
Mr. Spell, that's not really accurate, I mean.
Why it's not?
Let's face it, we have been out there, you've been out there, trying to get the residents to sign off on easements so we could get through, that has not happened, and you know that. And that's not the first time that claim has been paid to that lady that lives there under FEMA, she's been flooded a few times. And one time, when I was personally there, when you and I were there, that place was flooded. So, it's not accurate what you just said.
It's accurate, Mr. Harvey.
It's accurate there's a canal there, but it's not accurate because we can't get in there to clean it out, because the landowners will not give us permission to do that. We have been trying desperately to do that, and we did receive state money to clean that out, we just got to get permission.
Okay, but now, I'm going to take you to this point, beans you got an attitude with it.
I don't have an attitude, sir, I'm just not going to, we're not going to have the audience realize something that's just one-sided. You and I are friends, and I appreciate our friendship, but there is other circumstances involved in this situation.
Okay, now, let's go to this point. You remember when it was brung to the county about buying the spider for cleaning ditches, and it was brought up with this piece of equipment? Because I tried to talk to you one day, and you just walked by me like I wasn't even there. Wait a minute, let me finish, please. You went out there to look at it because y'all had it out there showcasing it, but Mr. Press Tompkins, when he first come to you all, you said, he said, "If we purchased this machine, we could kind of get around some of the easements and, and right of ways and all of that, that due to the fact that this machine can go in six foot of water." Now, like I say, that ditch is not that wide, I could stand flatfoot at one point and jump right across it, but my point I am making is no one put any effort to go from 207 right to the trail and at least get some of that open, and it probably wouldn't have saved it, but the point of it is, no effort was put towards doing anything, but there was steady money, money was received twice, that's the point I'm making. I'm not saying that it would have saved it, I'm saying, wasn't any effort put towards it. And my next point is, when I come to you all about the way DOT put all of that dirt on that railroad bed before they even put the trail through there, I tried to get the county to come in and at least do a little bit to get some of that water off, and you came, they came up with all kind of excuses. I had two hundred and fourteen rolls of hay in my barn that was in a foot of water during the storm. I never had that problem until they put all that dirt on that railroad bed, it eroded into the ditch, the road department sent some inmates out there with shovels and machetes when it was an excavator, and over two thousand loads of dirt from one end of that area to the other end piled up, but I did lose a little bit of hay, but what I'm saying is, we come to y'all with problems, and you take an engineer, whatever, whatever they tell y'all, it's just like y'all would take a donkey for a racehorse. When I come to you about on Putnam Boulevard with the bags of concrete along the road, Mr. Tompkins said the road was too wet, but then they put asphalt there. Okay, yeah, y'all come back and got your seven bags of concrete and put ten shovels of asphalt there, but he still left a big pothole there. When those trucks go in and out, it's going to break the shoulder of the road.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Thank you, Mr. Spell.
But like I say, you know, it's to the point that I just stopped coming to the meeting, but I just wanted to come in and tell y'all thanks for the effort that you did do, but she still ended up losing her home. Thank you.
Mr. Tompkins, would you like to come up and explain the process of why we're not getting the easements? And then we're gonna close this section out. And I do think these people are racehorses and they're not donkeys, so...
Good morning, Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. As you know, I stood up here many day in front of you. We do have the capability. We bought the equipment to do it, but I cannot work on private property. We have been very explicit about that and explaining that. We have been out there, I know at least four times, with petitions and trying to get people to sign these easements so we can go in there and work, and we have had absolutely no response. I cannot work on private property. The machine we do have, we do, we used it on easements that we have in hand. We've cleaned a lot of outfall ditches. But please realize, this storm dropped a 500-year storm event on us. The amount of rainfall is equivalent to a 500-year storm. We normally design roads and drainage to the 10-year and 25-year storm event. So that was the order of magnitude that we're dealing with. And as far as Cracker Swamp Road that he's referring to, that is a prescriptive road. We only own it from edge of pavement to edge of pavement. I can't go fix a private driveway in front of L&amp;M Farms. I talked to Mr. Corn about that. He understands it. We fixed what we could fix within the prescriptive easement that we have.
Thank you. You know, I think one thing too, we need to be, to be very aware of. Chief Ramay, you might can help me on this. At June, we had a burn ban in Putnam County. We were talking, no fireworks, no, nothing gonna happen for July 4th. And towards the latter part of June, started getting a little rain. I had cut the grass in front of my dock with lawnmower, okay? There was no water there. Today, two months, two and a half months later, eight feet of water is where I was cutting grass at. Never seen this in my history of living in Putnam County as a young boy till now. Usually we get a wet winter, wet summer, wet winter, and water starts gradually coming back. We've been, the faucet has been turned on here in the county.
Absolutely, and just as a point, the night of the storm, we got over 10 inches of rain here. Some areas got more, but as an average, it looks like from the early estimates we're seeing from the Weather Service, just the night of the storm into the next morning, we got over 10 inches of rain, so...
Way, I know. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your comment. Is anybody else wanting to speak from the public? All right, seeing none, we're gonna close our public portion of our meeting. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Gonna reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting. Thank you for allowing us to take a quick break. The public portion of our meeting is closed. I'm understanding that item F, is that correct, Mr. Manning, has been pulled off?
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and pull that and do some more looking into that item before we take action.
All right. Commissioners, there's a consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, and K before you. Is there any items you'd like to pull for discussion?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to pull I.
Okay. Mr. Lible?
I have none today.
Mr. Pickens?
Uh, H and I.
Okay, and Mr. Turner?
Uh, Stacy pulled mine.
Okay, good deal. I'd like to talk briefly, really quickly, C, D, G, and that's it, C, D, G. Yep. Okay, since item I seems to be the biggest one. Well, let's just go with C and D being first. These are administrative sale of surplus property and to two people. Mr. Manning, I applaud you for doing this. This is what the board has been wanting to do for quite a bit of time. This is, if you'll explain how this happened and trying to move this from county back to the private sector.
Sure. These are properties that escaped to the county, which means taxes weren't paid, tax certificates were issued. They were offered for sale for tax deed and nobody purchased them, so they ended up being owned by the county. According to Florida statute, we have an opportunity when property is not suitable for issuance of a building permit and it is under a certain value, I think it's $15,000. According to the Property Praiser website, we can offer those properties to adjoining property owners. And that's what we've done on these two properties, and that will get them back onto the tax rolls. And, you know, hopefully those adjoining property owners can put these to beneficial use.
What I'd like for the public to see is also the fact that if you know of properties that you'd like to, you're interested in, contact us because we do not want to be in the real estate business or not that people, or government, and we want that property back to the private landholder. Mr. Manning, I applaud you for getting, this is a few times I've seen this on our agenda, and I really appreciate that-
You're welcome.
-from the bottom of my heart. I'll take item G real quick. This is Public Works 2017 MSBU rate resolution. Just for our citizens to know, Commissioner Palacir, when he was here, had a public hearing out in the West End, as I did too, on MSBU. We have found out now that we need to go do a little bit more work to establish some different rates. So, the meetings we had, Mr. Manning, pretty much were, I'm gonna say useless, but-
Well, I mean, it's certainly not useless. It's valuable information, you know, to find out what kind of level of service and the folks who, you know, want. And that way we know next year, when we're going back and looking at these MSBU's and starting the process anew to establish not only a current rate, but maximum rates. And that's really what, what was keeping us back from raising those right now is because when the MSBU's were originally established, there was no maximum set. So we're not able to adjust those according to today's cost. So, the county really has been kinda subsidizing some of the level of service on those, you know, until we can get through that process.
Well, thank you. I just didn't want the public to go, "Why do we have meetings?" And that this is why, and we're gonna clean that up and move forward. Commissioner Goddard, you wanted item I, you and Commissioner Pickens did?
Yes, I'd just like to know, you know, how we got to this point. I don't know who answers this.
This is the, page 119 of your packet, the finance resolution approving write-off of uncollected ambulance account?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an annual exercise we go through when we write down the uncollected ambulance amounts owed to the county. If, if you look back to history, in 2015, we had $1,077,000 write-down. In 2016, it jumped up to 1.471 million, and then back down again this year to 1.068 million write-downs. This is part of the normal part of the business. We know that we're not gonna collect all those. I think it's interesting because I asked Ms. Frank to do this for us, and she went back. In 2012, we had almost $3 million that were in write-downs. And we went back and worked with the EMS folks in their billing to find ways to improve the timeliness of the billing because we know that to get this number down as low as it is now, that is a result of quick bills going out. And that the quicker you are to the event, the more likely you are to collect that, those dollars either from, from whatever source they're paid from, because they're paid from a lot of different sources. And so, that is well within the range of what the norm is for uncollected ambulance debts. And so, I wanna congratulate and thank the EMS folks for getting back on the task of getting those bills out quickly because that does make a difference. And you can see this from 2016 to 2017, almost $400,000 improvement in that collection rate. But this is a normal annual process we go through to write those down and to clear them off the books. We don't quit trying to collect them just in the bookkeeping perspective of it. We have to write it down.
Right, yeah. That, I just wanted it to be brought out here because it has decreased. And this is a recurring yearly debt that we go through, but that we have been making strides in improving collections.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted it to be brought out that this, this isn't new. This is yearly, and it is improving.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, Tim, I'm sure that you continue to work to try to collect. Are there anything that you might try next year, the upcoming year, to try to improve that? Is there anything that is possible, or is this just a cost of doing business?
Well, I do think that some of that is a cost of doing business. I know that, you know, when we had this discussion during the budget workshops and, you know, talk about finding ways to collect quicker to the event is really about all you can do. We do use the services of a collection service to help assist in going after those longer-term debts. But the reality is, is that you, EMS, and the county is not gonna turn people down based on their ability to pay. And that's just part of the service and, you know, it's part of the way it works. But we'll continue to look for areas that we can make improvements on.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might, one other thing that is worth mentioning is that, you know, a number of these accounts do often end up in a probate estate. And we do, when we can, we make, you know, a claim in that probate estate as an additional attempt to collect them what is owed. Oftentimes, there's really not, you know, the money to go around, given all the different, you know, exemptions and whatnot. But we do, we do continue to do that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I've been floating an idea for about 10 years now.
I know what you're, I know your idea.
I wanna put a credit card machine in the back door of the ambulance. It sounds like I might have some support here today.
Well, Ms. Papel just got excited over that.
I wish, but we have to write it off. It's accounting rules. We can't carry uncollectible debt.
Right.
It takes a D-square. You can do it in any location, areas. I don't, I'm serious about y'all laugh at me.
As long as the patient is aware, is that correct, or? No, I'm just-
I just wanna get paid.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens, you had item H?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions maybe for Press on this.
Item H is 99 in your packet?
Yes, Chairman. I just have, this is just continuing to go with Karen again. When was the last time that it was actually, you know, put out for bid? And were there a number of companies want to offer this service?
It was bid before I got here. My understanding was, I think, I could be correct, I think she was the only bidder on it. This is just a continuation of an existing contract with her. We have to renew it annually with her and at the same rate that applied to it. But I haven't heard of any other interest from anybody wanting to even bid on it.
Okay. I do get some comments from some of the people on Drake Island about, you know, the times that the ferry is available. Stacy, is this possible? We could set this up for a workshop sometime next year to look at it, maybe bring in some of the residents to hear their concerns on the service and what they might like, and maybe some suggestions. And then, and then maybe look at sending it out to bid for next year?
Certainly. We can do that.
I'd like to do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Okay, that concludes all of our pulled items. So the chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, and K.
Okay, I'll make motion that we accept all but consent agenda F.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard?
I'll second it.
A proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. The ayes have it. We are now going to recess our Board of County Commission meeting and go into our 9:20 Port Authority meeting. And Commissioners, as you well know, you are the port authority. So we will go right into that meeting. I will call the Port Authority meeting to order. First item of business is to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, July 26, 2016. And there was only two of us here on that meeting that were here at that time. So, the chair will entertain a motion.
We will approve it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And since I was here, I will do the second on that. Is there any further discussion on the motion in the second? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Okay, the item at hand is on page 144. Mr. Manning, do you want to take this?
I can, a little bit. I think Mr. Smith and Ms. Frank can address it further. But basically, it was PDM Bridge that failed to satisfy the length of term of their lease. They went ahead and sold all the assets of the company. The company ceased to exist. They moved out of the building, although it was early according to the lease terms. And I'll let them go into that a little further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith?
In your packet, you should see that the rent that has not been paid during this contract since PDM Bridge left was $196,000. There's $13,000 sales tax, water charge of $4,500, and late fees of $349,000 for a total of $563,000. So, similar to the ambulance bills, because this gets booked, we have to write it off since we didn't collect it. And that's the purpose of the resolution is to allow us to write down that debt. But I do have a question. Since PDM Bridge left and Veritas Steel has been there, and they did not assume the lease agreement, this is a question for the county administrator attorney, is there currently a contract with Veritas? And are they paying rent?
Oh, gosh. I don't know the question of that.
I know they're in business.
I don't know the answer to that question right now. It's something I'd have to, I'd have to look into, and I don't see Press here right now. He could probably answer that right off top of his head.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's a question that we need to ascertain, answer.
I mean, I would certainly hope so if they're, if they're building and operating.
If you want it from Press, fine, but I can answer it for you.
Go right ahead, Commissioner.
Veritas did not assume the lease on our building at the port.
No, they did not. I know that. I know that for sure.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, I mean, I know they didn't assume the lease. I'm questioning, are they paying any rent on that even? Either in another lease or an agreement of some type?
The ship that was there for the last year had an agreement with Press, Public Works. They used the building a little bit. I don't know to what extent or where that lies.
Yeah, I don't know that that was Veritas at all.
Yeah, Veri- I don't think Veritas is involved.
Well, I, I ask them this, and Veritas is still in business out there. So, someone's using a county facility, and we need to see if they're paying rent. If they're not, we need to recognize that.
Yeah, my understanding is that was the ship, the gentleman working on that large blue ship, and they were paying rent, although they're not there anymore. The ship is gone. And we actually have some, we moved some RVs over into that facility out of EOC before the storm hit to make room for some of the rations that we were bringing in. So if you're seeing something over there, that's county, those are county assets.
Thank you.
The last negotiations we had with Veritas Steel was the negotiation over the crane. They wanted to abandon it.
Yeah.
And we asked them to donate it to the county so we would maintain a large crane for off-shipment of our industrial complex. And I, as far as I remember, that is all we do with them. It kinda severed everything. There is a property line going through there. They occasionally would like to use it when they bring, get a shipment by barge. But how often that happens, Mr. Smith, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do some research on that, and we will get back to that. Thank you very much. Is there any, okay, that's the end of that.
Chairman, can we go a step further on that, please? So what we're saying is Veritas isn't using the county property at the moment, so we don't need to pursue a lease with them unless we, there's some kind of an agreement-
unless we, there's some kind of an agreement that we need to possibly pursue that if they use it sometimes. But they're using their own place over there. Is, did I understand that correctly or not?
I do believe that's the case.
Brian, would you like to speak to this? We do have our executive here and he-
I just, I just don't want there to be any confusion here about what's going on.
Brian, very much would like to rent this facility, I think, on our behalf.
I'm Brian Bergen. I'm the Vice President of Economic Development with Putnam County Chamber. To my knowledge, Veritas only pays a docking fee when they do actually bring a barge in or out. I don't believe they're using the crane and if they do, they do that as a paid as they go item. But they are using most of their own property to get their stuff in and out. And the fences, my understanding is where the property line is and they do have access, so.
In my meager opinion, it seems to me like if they donated the crane to us, we ought to let them use it once every two or three months if they need it.
That, I think that actually is-
That's the deal.
How the deal was. So, but we do, I, I think they are still paying like our thirty-five dollar docking fee when they do pull up to the dock or, or tie off. So just like everybody else has done.
And, and users of the crane provide their own personnel, um, to operate it?
Yeah, we, we do not have an operator for the crane that I'm aware of that's licensed.
Who would maintain it?
The county's responsible for me. It's a county asset.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other further discussions on this item? Okay, seeing no further discussions, the board, the chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lible. We got a proper- Proper second by Mr. Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. We are going to end our Port Authority meeting, close that out, and reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting for today, this nineteenth of September. Gentlemen, before you are appointments, uh, that you have, you can make. So, uh, let's just start with my left and go to Mr. Turner. Is there any appointments that you'd like to make today?
Yes, sir, I would like to appoint, uh, a person to the Waterways and Trails, uh, for District Three, Mr. Ken Mahaffey.
You just made Commissioner Lible very happy.
That wasn't my intention, but always. I'm working on the two, the two for the fair board. I'm gonna need a little more time on them for District Three.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens, any appointments you'd like to make?
I just have, I have somebody interested in serving on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. And, uh, I understand Tabitha, you could, uh, give me the information on what the requirements are, how many times they meet. That's, I just have questions on that. Will you be able to get that for me? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lible?
Uh, have none today. Thank you.
Commissioner Goddard?
None.
And I have one. I would like, if it's appropriate, and it can be my district appointment or it can be, but on the fishing fund, the new fishing fund advisory committee we set up, um, I'd like at-large to be John Browning. If that would be appropriate? Okay, so right now, the two appointments are John Browning as the at-large Fishing Fund Advisory Committee and Ken Mahaffey for Waterways and Trails. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
Have proper motion by Commissioner Goddard?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. The ayes have it. County Administrator, uh, interim county administrator, Mr. Stacy Manning, comments, please.
Um, I, I've got, uh, one item that I, uh, would like, uh, action on by the board. At the July twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen meeting, um, this board approved, um, selling a property back to a property owner whose property is cheated to the county. Uh, if you remember that, her name was, uh, Suzanne Woodard. It was contingent upon her payment being made within sixty days. Considering the hurricane and, and everything else going on, she would like an extension on that until October fifteenth. So I would be, um, looking for a motion to, uh, uh, approve extending that condition to October fifteenth.
Okay, Commissioners?
I move for approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard?
Second.
A proper second by Commissioner Lible. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you, and, um, you know, there's a lot I could say about what's going on in the past week, but I'll, I'll hold that off for another time 'cause, uh, there, there's just so many people and, and I really want them all here so I can thank them personally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, county attorney hat now.
Oh.
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Tim Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I would like to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Turner on, uh, assuming the office, uh, for his district. Uh, we're looking forward to working with you. I think, uh, Terry's experience in the business world is gonna really, uh, be a great, uh, asset to our county and wanted to congratulate him on, uh, assuming that office. Uh, secondly, I wanted to just make a few comments if I could, uh, as it related to the storm. And I know, uh, all of our Commissioners were, uh, as involved in this. Everywhere you looked, uh, you saw them and, um, there's been a lot of pictures pasted on, uh, posted on Facebook, showing the events from around the county. And you always saw Commissioners there and, uh, particularly Mr. Manning. But I did want to especially, um, talk about Commissioner Lible. Uh, and I want to go back a couple of weeks to our budget preparations and we had that, uh, uh, almost day-long meeting to go over, uh, everybody's budgets and try to figure out how we made things work. And as I've spoken before, uh, that this year is a revenue-challenged year, which means we have a revenue expense, uh, challenge also. And I want to congratulate all of you that have worked hard to do that. But I was, um, mostly impressed, uh, during that meeting because, uh, Commissioner Lible, he has a history of what goes on in this county and particularly from his years of service on this board. And it was so valuable as we had those discussions when an item would come up and, um, there'd be a question, why did we, why are we a member of this or why do we pay for that? And, uh, Chip could tell us the history of that. And particularly, one, uh, I thought was important was the Northeast Florida Transportation, um, effort that we're in and how that is, uh, beginning to show dividends and payoffs to our county. But secondly, uh, I had talked to Chip and he told me the story of the nursing home. And he told me of Mr. Manning standing in the water and, uh, uh, Mr. Suggs out there standing in the water and a lot of other folks standing in the water. But two days later, I saw him in his truck, had tools hanging out the back. He was going down Highway seventeen south. And I said, he's still out there trying to help people. And, you know, just what an asset he is to our county. And I wanted to congratulate him on that. And then lastly, I wanted to thank, uh, Danny Shepherd and all his crew, uh, with the building and maintenance. The courthouse had, uh, you, I, I think in one room down in the basement, there was probably a cup's worth of water that seeped in somewhere. Uh, but the roof held up like it was supposed to. Our new windows, uh, didn't leak. Uh, there was no damage to that building and that building is built in nineteen oh six. Uh, so, uh, thanks to them that, uh, once the court said that we could reopen, it was basically just flipping the switch. Uh, everything came back up and worked like it was supposed to. So I wanted to congratulate everybody, but a special thank you to Commissioner Lible.
Thank you.
It's an honor. Thank you, especially coming from you.
There's another story that you don't know about with Commissioner Lible. I understand you went to the dump. And they actually wanted, they thought he was gonna unload all that stuff out of this truck. He's like, no, this is stuff I work with.
That may say something on the condition of your tools, Mr. Lible.
That was just directing me back. Come on, load, get that stuff out of there.
Uh, there's a lot of funny stories that we could tell there, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith, and we appreciate that. Commissioner comments, starting to my left, Mr. Turner?
Yes, uh, what are, are we still planning on starting the debris pickup tomorrow?
Uh, I, I, are we looking at tomorrow or Wednesday?
Tomorrow is Wednesday.
Oh, God, okay. Yes.
One time he said you might even get a day ahead, but we are gonna start tomorrow as far as debris pickup if you-
Mr. Turner, you've got to get near the microphone. Brandon is turning you up.
Okay, well, excuse me.
We're gonna put a cordless one on you.
Well, that's all right. I can dance around the room with it then.
We, we will be certifying the trucks and everything and have the, uh, East Palatka area open. And then as soon as they're certified, they'll be starting out going.
Okay, are, are we gonna bring in enough different crews to where we can tell people in certain areas that about such and such a week or in this two-week period or whatever, they're gonna be in a certain spot where someone that wants to go ahead and, and make the little extra effort to get their last trash by the road they can at that point or?
We're, um, on every Monday, they're going to be providing a seven-day and a fourteen-day schedule. I hate to say that, you know, schedules are meant to be broken in this because when you go by and you look and you say this is gonna take two days to pick up and when you, by the time you get there seven days later, it takes you five days to pick it up. But, you know, they are gonna be providing a schedule as to where they're, they're going to be working. Uh, when they first are started, uh, they're gonna be kind of clustered in one area until they get a good view as to where they're gonna scatter out to and get the schedule going. So the first few days, they will be clustered in the, um, San Mateo, um, area, close to the fairgrounds, East Palatka. That's where they'll be working to begin with. Um, then after that, they'll have time to, to view, uh, most of the debris and make their plans for where they're gonna go and then get their schedules in for you.
I understand the scheduling part, so they will update it as best they can every, every week or two?
Uh, every Monday, they're supposed to provide us a schedule for the next seven days and for fourteen days.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, before you-
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Gass?
I had somebody ask me about, you know, we're charging the tipping fee and it was on, it was on construction debris. Do you explain, you know, what would, it would, it would impact the county if we do waive this impact fee or, or the tipping fee?
We had a little over half million dollars in lost revenue last year by waived tipping fees. That is on top of the expenses for the hurricane debris removal, uh, that we were hit with. We will be opening a center, uh, at the fairgrounds for citizens to bring debris that will not be a charge to the citizens, but it will be a pass-through to FEMA. They'll be able to drop it off. The FEMA contractor will handle it, process it. We'll pay them for it, but it won't be taking up landfill airspace. And, uh, that's the situation we don't want to be in, uh, this year. Is to lose that airspace and revenue that can be generated from the airspace, uh, for the storm debris with nothing coming in. Basically, we end up paying double. We pay to collect it and we pay to dispose of it.
Mr. Gass, are you prepared to, um, to, um, provide, um, public notice at this point? That that is ready to be operational and when it will be operational and the details of what folks can bring there?
I will, I will provide the details as soon as it is operational. I got, uh, field approval from DEP yesterday, uh, to do a incinerator. Everybody said the, all the rules are waived, but you still gotta jump through the hoops. So you, you gotta get what's called field approval to do it. And I got that from Brian Darden with, uh, DEP out of Jacksonville yesterday. So we'll be getting the equipment up as soon as it's up. I think we wanna test it, uh, a little bit before we open up for the citizens to just start pouring in because we don't want to have all the citizens bringing everything in and then have a failure and have to shut it down. So we, we'll make sure it's up, running, everything's right, and we'll make a mass notice that this is where everybody brings their debris if they want to bring it.
And again, this will be for, for citizens that don't want to leave the vegetative storm debris on the curb. This will be a location that they can bring that debris, um, at no charge to them with no tipping fee.
Okay, but that doesn't include any construction debris. Like, can you set the construction debris on the side of the right-of-way and it can pick up also?
Construction debris can go on the side of the right-of-way. Uh, it will be picked up. It will be one of the last items to be picked up because we, we can't mix the, the two debrays together. So, uh, construction demolition debris is generally very scattered. You know, one house may have it and, you know, it's six miles before the next house has any construction demolition debris. Unlike the yard waste or the storm debris from vegetative matter where you can look and almost everybody has something. That's why with the, the first concentration is on the vegetative matter to get it up and out 'cause that's the most volume that's there. And then we'll come back and pick up the storm debris because the, the C and D debris, because that's transported directly to the landfill.
But still, the best thing to be done is the citizens to put their individual piles out on the public right-of-way.
Correct.
It's the best scenario we got.
And that's, that's the best thing. Let them do their job. Let the FEMA contractors do their job and pick it up and, and get it to where it's supposed to go.
And you're gonna show some love to Commissioner Turner by starting in his district, so.
I'm not complaining.
I know you're not.
Well, it, it was a bad hit.
It was.
It was a bad-hit area.
It was. Thank you so much. Any further questions?
Uh, yes, I do. Not for him, I'm stuck.
No, you're fine.
Just have another comment under my-
Please do.
At some point in the next year or in the next few months, if we can work it in, I would like to request a workshop on bidding procedures from the different departments. Whether it be purchasing, public works, um, the, uh, facilities and just try to review the procedures of that if we could.
We have been working, Mr. Manning's been working probably very little at this time, but trying, him and Melissa, Melissa Dillon about getting the new purchasing ordinance. But they'll be bringing something like that to us, but we can surely put that on our workshop agenda.
Yeah, or, or you can, um, can certainly have, have you sit down with Ms. Dillon, um, directly because, uh, as the purchasing director, she is in charge of overseeing, um, purchases of all the departments. And she can kind of go over some of the specifics of, of, um, how those purchases are, are, are made and, and what our current ordinance requires as far as that go. But yes, we are also looking at updating-
I mean, if it would keep us out of a workshop, I can try and go and sit with them. I've, I've worked with the county for a lot of years and I think I can bring a different perspective than what they've seen for quite some time to that process if, or at least let them have my process and then, uh, then they can decide what they want to do and bring to the board.
Well, Mr. Turner, I think it's, I think it's twofold. I think you should sit down with them and then when they get everything ironed out, they're gonna bring it back to the board at a workshop anyway. So, thank you very much. Any further?
Welcome your input.
Any further items?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Pickens?
I'd just like to say I was, um, and I'll save most of my comments for the appropriate time when more of the department heads are here. But I was just through this last week. I was so impressed with staff, uh, EOC, Sheriff's Department, the city, everybody working together to make sure our citizens are safe. And, and the process, it was all new to me. Uh, so I just want to congratulate everybody and just, and thank them so much. I think everybody did a great job. And I know everybody's tired. They're probably glad to get a little sleep and power's back on. And the power crews, uh, they did a great job also. A lot of the, uh, power that was restored in South Putnam was from the Kansas City group. And, uh, and they did a great job throughout the county. Uh, on a personal note, I do want to congratulate Terry Turner and welcome to the commission. Uh, I've known Terry some thirty-five years and I agree with, uh, Tim Smith that I believe that his business- and I believe that his business background, uh, will just be a tremendous asset to, to our board. Uh, homegrown product, lived there all his life, um, uh, been involved with the chamber and many boards, uh, probably construction boards, roofing boards. So I just think that experience is gonna be a positive for, uh, for the commissioners to move forward, and also to, uh, bring in Terry Suggs Monday, I believe. Uh, so I believe we're ready to move forward and, and, and get some work done. On a personal note, uh, today is my thirtieth anniversary, and I just wanna wish my wife a happy anniversary. Now, if she put up with me for thirty years, I'm not sure. And Terry, I don't want you to make any comments, uh, during the commission meeting. Uh, but anyway, there will not be dinner for us tonight, because you know that she's a volleyball coach, and she has a game in Pearson, so it'll be a little bit later on. And also, a few weeks ago, I announced, uh, at the end of the meeting, uh, that at the start of the meeting, nine o'clock, my, our youngest son Bobby was sitting to take the Florida bar. And that was a two-day process, and, uh, anyway, when he got done, he really didn't feel that he did very well. But it takes about six weeks, I guess, to get the results, and at nine o'clock yesterday morning, he got the results. And I am a proud father to tell you that he passed the Florida bar. I know that everybody aboard, and a lot of our friends are just so proud, as proud as I am. But I just wanna say Bobby would love you and so proud of you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Lible?
Oh, okay. Uh, one thing I've learned over all those years, um, I've seen a lot of management to throw a ball back in your court, Mr. Tim, but we've never had a clerk that took care of our courthouse like you have. So it's no wonder. I mean, it is in fabulous shape, and, uh, the need to build a new one doesn't seem to exist because of your effort, and I, we thank you for that. We don't need to spend that money, but thank you for all the accolades. Um, as far as the storm, I don't wanna talk too much till that last person has their power turned on. I've learned that lesson, too. Come back to haunt you, but Dana, you and Brian both, um, I just needed to do a shout-out to y'all. You're overlooked a lot of times, but pre-storm, they made relationships, which they have going all the time, with our retailers throughout the county, and commitments to be open therefore soon as possible after the storm went through. And sitting in the EOC, I noticed what power that was. People, if you want them to return to their normal patterns, get the stores open. And that's exactly what you guys did, and, um, I think that was probably the best medicine for recovery I saw through this whole effort. Thank you very much. And then the other one was, Gator, incredible. Not only did we have a sheriff that was with us all the time, which has never happened, by the way, I'm gonna tell you, that I've seen, anyway, but we also had a representative and a, um, congressman from the federal government. That's never happened. I mean, the leadership from the top was, and the resources that those two brought, and the resources that our sheriff's office brought are just, they're, they're valuable. And I thank y'all for what you did. I don't know when you slept. Every time I went to the EOC, you were there, and looked like you'd been there a long time, but thank you. You're young and strong, and I'm glad. But anyhow, I'm gonna save, uh, a lot of my comments. I'm gonna, the next meeting, I'll have a lot of thank-yous. I want, I really mean that. Uh, no backslapping until this trash is picked up and that last meter is working in the electric grid, where, uh, you can catch a lot of criticism. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, that's still a hard act to follow there. It, it was amazing to me. I mean, I've always loved our county. I thought our county was fantastic. And I had nothing to compare it to, because I'd never been through one of these storms. But, uh, and I'd never been where I was put as the chairman at the time either.
Thank you.
So, uh, it was, it was interesting, but it, it made it very comfortable, because everybody went well above. I mean, it was incredible. All I did, actually, I stood out of the way. Uh, anything you wanted me to go do, I'll carry water. I'll do whatever, as long as I don't have to make any major decisions. But it was just incredible. Every department, uh, the school board. I was so impressed with the people from the school board that would get down there and get the generators going, the refrigeration going, and, uh, e- e- every department was, was doing everything they could. I mean, uh, the police department, they didn't arrest Chip for stealing the truck. They, they really did well above. I mean, everybody did great. And it was never a panic there. They just did their jobs, and they, you know, volunteered. You saw people volunteering for whatever, cooking food, delivering food, uh, you know, whatever needed to get done was getting done. It, it was impressive, very impressive.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. I do wanna say during the process, and I know you recognize this, it's your last meeting, but, uh, former Commissioner, Mr. Robert Revels, passed away. We did contact his family, and we will be doing something in the future to honor that. Uh, but they're just not ready for that at this moment. Sheriff, thank you for all your hard work in your department, and, um, the curfew as we sat around EOC yesterday and didn't need the curfew anymore. That was very important. I did get some calls on that, but I will say this. The Sheriff's Department was not stopping people for legitimate reasons to be out. They were looking for people that had no business being in your neighborhood when the power wasn't on. And that's all their concern was with your safety. And I mentioned that earlier today, that every, the first filter that I've seen through all the decisions were made was how do we protect Putnam County citizens? And that's, that was the reason for the curfew. It was from eight to eight, and then it went to eleven to six. And the first reason, I'll tell you, that I heard, was let's get the people back out to support the businesses that need to rely on the people to come. And I was so impressed with that, and, uh, wasn't trying to keep people home, 'cause I even had to break the curfew to get gas for my trip into town and my generator. We all probably did, but it were legitimate purposes, and I wasn't in an area that I had no business being in. So with that said, thank you for your, for your looking out for Putnam County and our citizens. I can recall that one night I was out there monitoring my generator that was running, and a car pulled up, and they had no business being in my area. When I flashed the light on them, they took off. So it's important to know that, uh, we have safety in place for that reason. Mr. Turner, I too wanna say welcome to the board. I've served with you in many capacities over the years, and I've always appreciated your straightforwardness that you have, your intelligence that you bring to the table, and your calm demeanor at times when, when it needs. And his boisterous when it needs to happen also. But one thing you can say about Terry Turner is that, uh, I believe the government made a right choice in that matter. And, um, I expect no less from you to be yourself and to represent your citizens well. And, um, you'll have the full support of this board and this chairman as long as I am in that endeavor. On Monday, the twenty-fifth, we do welcome our new county administrator. I know Mr. Manning is willing and able to give up that hat, wants to, to do that. Uh, but at eight-thirty in the morning, we're going to have a little breakfast here for Mr. Suggs. So we'll be getting with you on items that you can bring in, and, uh, we're gonna welcome Mr. Suggs here and, uh, look forward to a bright new future in Putnam County. Uh, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will recess this meeting until five oh five, or we'll have our.
Before, before we recess, uh, I, I realize I was first, but I forgot the accolades. And so I'd like to just add one quick accolade. The one thing that I noticed out of EOC the last two weeks is that if you wanted to get run over, then trip. Because those, when they got a mission, a statement, it wasn't just the department heads, it was the people that worked for them. When they got a mission, if you better, you better not be between them and that mission, or you'd get run over. Even when it didn't have anything to do with their department, if it was a mission that needed doing, such as feeding the needy. Colonel Wales, Major Wales, Colonel, Colonel Wales? Colonel Wales, um, went and helped them open the Bread of Life when those people needed it in the worst kinda way. And then he, he set up that it got cooked the next day, instead of just opening the first day, and made sure that it carried on the following day. That's not part of his job description. That's part of him being a good guy. So, you know, I think he needs accolades for that, too, and all the others. Sorry I missed it first time around.
You're fine. You're fine. And I wanna say something personally. All the commissioners here, there was a case in the EOC that day where they were trying to shut down the special needs, and it took every commissioner sitting up here to partner with someone. And I partnered with Kevin from Building and Zoning, Mr. Turner, Mr. Pickens, came up from the south end and the East Palatka area. We had to check on residents to make sure their places were able for them to go back. The trees were cleared out, the power was on, and there was one sheet, and within a matter of hours, that sheet was done and workable, and we got people back to their residence. So, I mean, this commission stepped up, and if you think that I'm not passionate about the fellow, the people I serve with, I'm very passionate, because we work very hard here, and we all wanna do what's right for Putnam County. So if there's no further comments, we will recess this meeting till five oh five. Thank you.